Want to start? All right, let's call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask if you could do a roll, roll call, please. Here.
Crawford.
Here.
McCallum.
Here.
Hunterizer.
Here.
Bazier.
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you, Monica. Let's see. Anyone, next item is our approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or additions to tonight's agenda that anyone would, would like to make a comment on?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, Kate and Jim, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Groove of the agenda. No minutes from our previous meeting to, to review. So that takes us to item number four, which is public comments. And other than maybe the applicant, I believe. Anybody online, anybody in the room that wants to make any public comments at this time? General comments? Okay. Then we will move along and go on to unfinished business. Which I don't know that we have any, says none. And now we're into our new business, which is 650 Water Street. It's a front setback and waterfront setback variance. And at this time, I guess I'd like to ask if our zoning administrator could give us a review of the application.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, and good evening, ZBA members. Request before you this evening is from Alec and Palitner of Grow Cafe. They're requesting a couple of variances to install a structural expansion to accommodate kitchen hood equipment at 650 Water Street. Their proposal requires dimensional variances to reduce the, the front setback along Spear Street to zero feet instead of the minimum five foot setback, which is a reduction of the full five feet, and then a reduction of the waterfront setback to fourteen feet instead of the minimum twenty-five foot setback, which is a reduction of eleven feet. The property owner, I'm sorry, the, the proposed restaurant, 650 Water Streets, and its associated site plan were reviewed previously by the Planning Commission and received conditional approval. At that time, the applicants were kind of working through some plans for their, their kitchen ventilation equipment. Since that time, they've, they've run us some various challenges with that, that equipment and how to, you know, vent things properly out of that, that building. And they'll kind of touch on some of those challenges that they had during their presentation to you this evening, including some alternatives that they looked at, which actually would have required even more variances that were even more significant. So they've kind of landed on, on this option that they're presenting to you this evening. We do have, you know, a situation where the, the lot does not conform to the minimum lot with requirements. It's also, the principal building does not currently conform to both front setbacks, south setback, and the waterfront setback as it exists. Another piece to keep in mind, too, is we, there was a a resulting that recently occurred along the waterfront. So this property is now in the new waterfront preservation district. So some of the setbacks may be a little bit different than what they were just even a few months ago. So applicants are here this evening, Mr. Chair, and I know that they're always prepared, but they're, they're prepared to present their request to you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right, well, we'd like to ask the applicant to, this time, to give us their information. Give us your name and we know your purpose, so that'd be nice.
Good evening, Chair Kabazier and Vice Chair Bauch and Board members. Thank you for taking the time for this special meeting. My name is Alec Palitner. We are residents of Sagatuck Township and for the past eight years owned and operated Grow Cafe and Bistro, just two blocks east of where we stand. We're very excited for our new project, which is a chef-driven, fast casual, family-friendly eatery in the former River Market deli space at 650 Water Street. That's why we're here. We, we do believe that this iconic downtown space beside the public boat launch and the star of Sagatuck is a perfect location for our new concept and an opportunity to make use of a vacant building on the waterfront within the historic district. Our challenge here begins and ends with the fact that this building to the north was built right up to the property line, a line adjacent with public property. In a recent workshop, the city council, while not yet officially voted on, did not indicate any initial issues with our encroachment there. However, the zoning rules are proving complicated hurdle to navigate, and that's exactly why we're here, because we need your help. So I just want to structure our brief presentation according to the four non-negotiables in your zoning variance application. Unreasonable burden, the neighborly justice, the uniqueness of the property, and the lack of self-imposition. Our application materials in your packet rightly explain the how of it all, but I'd like to touch on that, but also touch on the why and provide some additional images, which will be up on the screen, I believe, and also I handed you physical copies of those as well to review, so you can further understand our, our dilemma. So first, the burden of compliance here is, is more than just a burden. As mentioned, the placement of the principal building makes a compliance extension for our equipment really impossible. The equipment in question is a kitchen hood, which is, in its most basic function, pumps cooking air out and brings fresh air back in and is absolutely essential to a clean and safe restaurant operation. Typically, in this sort of situation, running duck work from the kitchen up to the roof would be the, the right move. In order to do that in a compliant fashion, we'd have to run up and through the second story residences at 650 Water Street. And that's primarily what the additional three sheets that I handed you shows explicitly. You'll see the footprint of the first story there on the first page. The second page shows the footprint of the second story. Equipment part circled in red. And then finally, the photographs there are kind of a little further down. One more, yeah, perfect. So that kind of shows you like in the top two photos, the, the round circles, that's the entrance point. And then the windows that are boxed out in the red there, those are the same windows. So it just kind of gives you a vantage point of, of where we're at here. And indeed, that equipment would literally have to go directly up and through the apartment building in apartment number one in order to maintain, again, compliance and keep that equipment inside of the, the four walls of the building. Our next consideration, admittedly non-conforming, was to house the equipment at grade level to the north of the building. And I think those are some of the additional images I put up here as well. Get out of order, my apologies, Jamie, thank you. So yeah, that was, we were looking at there as, as a alternative, but again, non-conforming option. And this would be the equipment at ground level surrounded by the fence here. The footprint of this particular solution would be about twenty times the imposition that we're requesting today with the smaller chimney-like solution. And what's furthermore, this particular fence rendering would not be accurate because of the waterfront views and other considerations, it would need to be spaced out. So you'd be able to see the equipment, it would be a see-through and an eyesore, to be sure, and, and not the solution we're shooting for. So that kind of covers the, the idea of unreasonable burden. Non-negotiable number two is your all commitment to the, the justice of it all in the language. And as mentioned in the background report in your packets that Ryan prepared, our request is minimal. It's a two-foot by four-foot, two and a half foot by four-foot extension. Any impact on our neighbors, impact on the guests of our town, our citizens, our waterfront views, or our safety would absolutely be minimal. And just to kind of think through those two alternative solutions that I brought through the second four of the residences or the ground level equipment, this is by far a very carefully conceived solution and by far the least intrusive of it all. And that brings me to non-negotiable number three, and that's the unique circumstances that this property poses. It is definitely kind of a wild property. Two frontages, a boat launch, a building that extends up to and over the property line. It borders city property on two sides, and there's nothing quite like it in our town. So I guess that's the very definition of unique. But considering all those factors, our plan still maintains nearly all of the public walkway there and the waterfront views. And in, again, a reference to that background report, the city representative prepared this, used the term that this building is a long-established historic district contributing structure. And I just love that because that's what we're doing, is we're doing all we can to preserve that contribution and this unique property in as minimally intrusive a way as possible. And then finally, non-negotiable number four. I assure you, this problem is not self-created and our request for a variance is not based on personal financial circumstances. We're just very simple, trying to be the best stewards of this building and make use of it the best we know how. We will indeed leave this building better than when we found it and hopefully just a few square feet bigger. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you'd like. Or we can sit down and let you discuss whatever your preference. Thank you again for being here for us.
Thank you, Alec and Lindsay. You can, if you want, you can sit down. What we'll do is we'll go in and go to a closed session, and then if we have questions, we'll, we'll be asking you those questions if we have any concerns. Okay?
Before we extend the room?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Well. Our hearing called the order, we have our summary and the presentation. We ask, is there any other public comment for this application right now? None, neither. Okay, any, no correspondence by writing that we received, nothing?
Correct, Mr. Chair, no correspondence has been received.
All right. Let's see. All right. And we'll go to our closed session and start our discussion with the board members. And before I do that, I would like to thank you, Alec and Lindsay, for giving us as much visual and written information as you have. It's very helpful. So, thank you at this point in time.
And just to, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, you're, you're just closing the public comment portion, right? You use the term closed session, I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding, we're not, we're not going into like a separate session.
No, 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 just, just any, 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 any related to the applicant. Under D, under public hearing procedure. Okay, so. Yeah. What do you guys, any, any questions or any concerns after reviewing the packets that we've had? And it seems like there's a number of options that have been pretty well thought through on this situation. And there is, I would say, in some, some examples, what we've, what I've seen and read and looked at, it is a minimal situation for understanding of what they want to add and need to have as a operating kitchen, I guess you'd call it, right? There are, there are some, you know, some situations here where it is neighboring two corners, as, as mentioned, and property is right on, well, actually, I think the actual building is over the property line in some couple spots, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
As I recall.
Yep.
And so that, that causes, you know, some interference that we're not used to. So is there any discussion we'd like to go through before we get into our, our review of any of the standards?
I, I previously had some questions, I relayed those to Ryan, and the applicants came back and they answered them very, very directly, so thank you. I wondered why we couldn't go straight up, why did we have to go out and around? And they've addressed that very well, so I'm satisfied.
Been a different kind of a heater for them, wouldn't it have been, rather than?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jim has had some previous questions answered. And, and I hope everybody's had a chance to look the side over and understand the, you know, the closeness, but the minimization of, of what's being, what's being proposed to us. There is. If I understand correctly, there is, is screening required? Is that what they were showing, Ryan, is that's required on the, on the side there as part of our ordinance?
Correct, Mr. Chair. So if they were to have the equipment at ground level, then there was going to be a screening requirement that was going to be triggered as well. So if they were, if they were going to pursue that option, then they would have had at least three or four more variances that they were facing.
Yeah, okay. And just from my, my, not that it's part of our ask, is the, is there, is there outdoor seating on the north side also? Is that?
So the, the Planning Commission did approve the outdoor seating on the north side, but at this time, the applicants chose not to pursue that. So the request that went to the city council for outdoor seating was for approval on the east side of the building. So at this time, they're not pursuing that, they may choose to do that at a future date, but at this point, they're not.
Okay.
Not moving forward with that piece.
I just, reason was, it's more in our, more on the side that we're looking at, and I just was trying to understand the.
That's fair, yep.
Maybe any type of effect that that may have presented. Okay. Richard, Kate, Jim, G A H, Jim H? You guys pretty good?
There again, it may not be germane, but the I am assuming the building encroaches a bit on the street right-of-way there as they, as pretty much all the buildings do down there.
Correct, it, it does.
That isn't really germane to our, where we're, with, for our discussion, I assume.
Well, in the sense that, I mean, it, obviously, you're adding something or something additional would be added that's encroaching, but the encroachment itself is something that the city council is able to approve in the, the city's space. And so is, you know, they, they kind of touched on that, they, they took these kind of options that they were looking at to the city council just for some preliminary feedback, not that it's binding upon you by any means, but just to kind of get the city council's feel on whether or not they were open to even allowing an encroachment with, into the right-of-way. And the city council preferred the chimney option if they're able to obtain the variances in historic district approval.
And the Planning Commission has reviewed this as, as yet?
So the Planning Commission reviewed the, the site plan. At the time, this chimney proposal was not a part of that.
Right.
So if they're granted variances here today, from my perspective as a zoning administrator, I, I think that it would be a minor amendment to their existing site plan, so we'll have to update that.
Being as how this is a ventilation for this application, then you'd be looking at fumes, smoke, that aspect of it, and then you'd want to know, you know, get input from the neighbors, I assume, then, or if they wish to.
Well, i- if we traded the minor site plan, it, it's not something necessarily that would go back to the full Planning Commission. We would review those, the standards of, the, the site plan review standards to the minor change. Certainly, tonight, I guess, you know, this meeting was noticed, so if somebody were to have concerns about fumes or impacts that this chimney, you know, would, would have as it relates to a variance issue, then they could have brought those concerns forth.
And it's a restaurant, I mean, when it was approved as a restaurant.
Correct.
One would assume there's going to be ventilation.
And they, yeah, and the Planning Commission did, I think that was discussed that, at their meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Certainly, the ventilation was being worked through, yeah, very good point.
Where this is located is probably the most open space there is.
Right.
To vent.
Well, let's hope they're selling good smells, let's put it that way. All right.
As opposed to the ducks down there at, at times.
Yeah.
On the boats.
No. Okay. Anyone else? I don't have any, I've had most of my review and, okay, I'm set. And how about, I would like to move on into our, our standards, a review of our standards, which starts for us on our packet of page two at the bottom, which is number one. And Richard, how about you for putting on first base tonight?
Okay. Number one deals with the, the standard is that strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. The comment by staff, which I would refer to as strict compliance with the minimum foot and waterfront setbacks would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property as a restaurant or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Due to the non-conforming nature of the lot and the non-conforming placement of the principal building, a compliant structural extension for the exhaust equipment for an interior kitchen area conversion is nearly impossible. The only potential compliant location is immediately west of the wood deck on the south side of the building as shown on the Alta and SPS survey. However, this location is not feasible because it aligns with the interior location of the restroom facilities. So one, I would, one could state that it's right, the number one criteria has been met.
I would agree on that. It seems like there's, as we said, there's been some efforts to minimize any, the burdensome to the outside and, and the effect of any neighboring situations. I think, Board, any comments on?
I agree that the standard is met.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
So all five of us agree on, on meeting the standard of number one. Yeah, how about Jim Huntiser for number two?
That a variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district, or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. Comments provided, variance may give substantial relief to the applicant based because the request is minimal, two-foot extension from the building, and the system would be no closer to the north property line than other portions of the building that currently encroach into the north front setback and public right-of-way. Lesser relief would make the entire request unfeasible. Additionally, justice for neighboring property owners would be preserved based on the minor nature of the request and minimal extension into the public right-of-way. Sufficient space along the seawall would be maintained for foot travel. Additionally, the exhaust equipment would have no impact on water quality, would not significantly impact views of the river from the public right-of-way. So with that, I believe that this criteria standard has been met.
Okay. And Mr. Bauch?
I agree, it has been satisfied.
Kate?
I agree.
Great, and Richard?
I agree.
And I agree also, so. Standard number two is, is, does meet the, the guidelines of our, of our approval, and that would put us into the third. And Kate, would you like to do that?
Sure. Well, the third standard reads that the plate of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. Staff comments, this particular property is unique based on its corner location, size, and width compared to compliant lots and the placement and orientation of a long-established historic district contributing structure on the lot. These conditions are not general neighborhood conditions, otherwise the C2 waterfront preservation district would not have been adopted as written. I believe this standard has been met.
And Richard?
Yes, I believe it's met.
J H?
I believe the standard has been met.
And JB?
I agree it's met.
All right, I agree also. So we have unanimous on, again, on item standard number three. Jim, I know you always loved this last one, so I'll let you into that one.
Thank you, sir. The, that the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. The overall problems related to the site are not self-created as the building is a historic structure and zoning conformity issues arose long ago. Additionally, new setback requirements for the C2 waterfront preservation district have increased the building's degree of non-conformity. None of these issues result from the applicant's actions. Additionally, the variance requests have no relationship to the project cost, but the burdensome nature of compliance. I believe the, the standard has been satisfied.
Jim Huntiser?
I agree, the standard has been met.
Okay.
I agree.
Richard?
I agree.
And I join in as in a unanimous on item, our standard number four. Rather, rather well-done and well-presented, plus a whole lot minimal as far as impact that we could have with situation on a building like this, I would think, for the conversion of what's going on there. And not that it's our approval, but I like the new color versus a red. That has nothing to do.
I agree.
Yeah, so, so in our review, you've, you have met our standards and we've approved the variances as presented to us. We will, but we will go to a motion to see if anybody all agree on the motion. Okay?
I do have one question. Is the, does the motion reflect the new zoning for that district?
It does, yes, yep.
Did you want to make that motion? You got what you were saying?
Not what I was saying, but I'd be happy to. I move to approve a variance to reduce the waterfront setback from the west to fourteen feet and to eliminate the north front setback requirement to allow a two-and-a-half-foot encroachment into the Spear Street right-of-way, two feet from the wall for the construction and installation of kitchen exhaust equipment at 650 Water Street based on the positive findings documented in the staff memo provided to the ZBA for its March 28th, 2024 meeting. Period. Oh, this approval is contingent upon the construction of the kitchen exhaust equipment being in substantial conformance with the location design and size as proposed and included in the 2024 ZBA variance applicant materials.
Is and before I ask for a second, I just want to ask a question, Ryan. Is there, well, this is a, a, a well-repaired motion. Is it always understood that it's this, our motions are reflective of the the drawing and permits there and, and that are in front of us? So that we can, we're referencing what is in front of us and making sure of that as, as submitted? Is that true? Without having to state that this motion is contingent on the, the drawings in front of us?
Um, I, I do think that it's, it's wise and, and, you know, to kind of include that, that language just so it's, there's, there's understanding from everybody that, that it's not just that you're generally granting maybe a, a reduction, you know, of, of a setback that it's specific to these plans that are before you.
Right.
You know, otherwise, somebody may say, well, okay, I'm going to meet that setback with a different set of plans. I mean, you reviewed it based on a particular set of facts and, and site plan and information that's before you, and that's the reason for your decision. So I think that supports that, that it's based on that.
Yeah, I think the last sentence says that, right?
Yeah.
Construction being in substantial conformance with the location, design, and size as proposed.
All right, well.
Unless.
You're saying, yeah, you're saying as proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Contingent upon. Did you use, did you read that?
I did, yeah.
Okay, sorry, then I misunderstood that part, I was up at the top. All right, then I'm, I'm okay with all that personally.
I'll stick to the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim Bauch. So we have a first by Kate and a second by Jim Bauch. Uh, so at this time, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
McCallum. Yes.
Hunterizer.
Yes.
Bazier.
Yes. You're official.
Thanks for making something great out of something.
Yes.
We look forward to it.
Thank you for your, thank you for your efforts and your detail. We appreciate that very much. So. All right, well, let's move on to the rest of our meeting, what is, what little is left here, I guess. Close that session and we'll go on to any communications that we have, any other communications for tonight?
None, Mr. Chair.
Uh, any comments, ZBA members' comments from this or any other? Uh, that leaves us with public comments. Anyone in the public or online that would like to make any statements of any kind?
Looks like Mr. Raphael's.
Chris is muted, oh, there he goes.
Hi, Chris Raphael, 569 Wyrick Drive. Thank you for your service. It's nice to see you doing something wonderful for this city here. I think it's a fantastic use of that property and congratulations to you. That's it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so, uh, that means we adjourned the meeting. We've gone through everything on our agenda tonight, so thank everyone. Appreciate it.
In a second to adjourn?
I will.
Go ahead.
I move that we adjourn.
Support.
All, all, yeah, do a roll call on that one, right? Can't do it, okay, roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, voice phone.
Yeah.
Oh, all, all.
Oh, all, all who want to adjourn signify by saying aye on the motion.
Aye. Aye.
Motion or, uh, meeting adjourned.
All right.